Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System. We appreciate your presence here. Thank you so much for your interest in the work of this system. We appreciate your presence very much. At this time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Robert Exley, who would give her an indication. And following that, we'll have our pledge of allegiance, which will be led by our trustee, Susan Porter.
Morning, Mr. Tim. There are words that are much better than I could come up with, and I would like to start by just reading something from Mother Teresa. She says, "Prayer is not asking. Prayer is putting oneself in the hands of God at His disposition, listening to His voice in the depths of our hearts." And with that, please bow with me as I read St. Francis of Assisi's prayer for us today. "Lord, make me an instrument of Thy peace. Where there is hatred, let me so love; where there is injury, pardon; where there is doubt, faith; where there is despair, hope; where there is darkness, light; where there is sadness, joy. O divine master, grant that I may not so much seek to be consoled as to console, to be understood as to understand, to be loved as to love. For it is in giving that we receive, it is in pardoning that we are pardoned, and it is in dying that we are born to eternal life." Amen.
Pledge of allegiance, if required, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Charles Caldwell?
Mr. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Blake McInally?
Present.
Mrs. Susan Boyd?
Present.
Mr. Mike Caldwell?
Present.
Mrs. Russell Martin?
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Present.
Mr. Chuck Sted?
Present.
Mr. Blake McInally?
Present.
Mr. Mary Scott Conner?
Robert Vittles?
Very good. We're pleased to have on the conference trustees Milton Davis and Blake McInally. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Each trustee received this prior to the meeting, has had time to look it over. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Will we approve the agenda before?
Motion by Ms. Brown, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion there being none, all those in favor of approving today's agenda, please raise your hand. And if there's a vote for the call, y'all can say aye.
Aye for mine.
Good. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting, the June 8, 2016 meeting minutes. Once again, the trustees have received this in advance of the meeting, had time to review the minutes. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Mrs. Boyd, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Van Troy. Any additions or changes to the minutes? It's been a motion, a second, to approve the minutes of the June 8 meeting. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Voice vote for conference call attendees?
Aye for this.
Aye for yours.
Aye. Thank you. Minutes are approved. Item six, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment? We'll move to new business. Item seven, this election of officers. Board members, I'll explain the process we use on the election of officers. We will be complying with Robert's rule of order on the election of officers since we don't address that specifically in our bylaws. In the manner that we'll proceed, I will open the floor for nominations. Any trustee can make a nomination. There is no need for a second. And if appropriate time, when we're finished with nominations, we'll close nominations, and then we'll have a vote. Any questions? I'm now open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I'll make a motion. It's Al Thompson.
Al Thompson's nominated for vice president. Nominations are still open.
Do you still refer to nominations for president?
We haven't given it enough time. Are there any other nominations for vice president? Not seeing any, we'll close nominations. And the way to proceed here, there's no vote. Robert's rule said if there's only one nominee, it's approved, that person is elected by acclamation. Is there any objection to that? Thank you very much. The next office will open the floor for nominations for President Pro Tem.
I nominate Milton Davis.
Milton Davis is nominated for President Pro Tem. Are there any other nominations for President Pro Tem? Not seeing any, nominations are closed. Milton Davis is nominated for President Pro Tem and is approved by acclamation. There being no objection, the vice president for the next coming year is Al Thompson, and President Pro Tem is Milton Davis. I appreciate y'all's confidence, and I'll do my best in the coming year to him. Mr. Chairman?
Recommend approval of item 8A1.
We have, of course, item 8A1, Alabama Community College System, allocation of the 2016-17 two-year college system in prison education operations and maintenance appropriation. This has been, this information's been disseminated to the trustees for some time. We had it on the work session, in conference calls. Is there a motion to approve this action item?
I'll make a motion, we approve item 8A1.
Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Caldwell. Discussion? Any comments, questions for the Chancellor on this action item, allocation of 2016-17 operations and maintenance appropriation? There being none, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of this item, please raise your hand. Voice vote.
Aye for Milton.
Aye for Blake.
Is it pretty unanimous, Lee?
Aye for Blake.
A1.
I would also like to recommend approval of 9A1. I'd just like to say a word or two about this. From time to time, we have an employee within the system whom I consider, and it is more than considered, too concerned in exemplary fashion. We have such an individual here in Coach Jack Robertson. His service in the coaching ranks spans many, many decades, as you'll hear in just a moment. And it's my recommendation that we approve a resolution that I'm going to ask Dave O'Brien to reiterate at this point.
A resolution commending Jack Robertson for outstanding professional service. Whereas, highest commendations are hereby proudly presented to Jack Robertson of Baymanet, Alabama, for forty-three seasons of outstanding professional service, on the occasion of his retirement as athletic director and men's basketball coach of the Faulkner State Community College Sun Chiefs. And whereas, with degrees from the University of South Alabama and Troy State University, Coach Robertson, a Baymanet native, came to Faulkner when he was only twenty-six years old. He retires with an impressive eight-hundred-fifty-five wins, three state championships, runner-up three additional seasons, fourteen Southern Division championships, and three appearances competing in the National Junior College Athletic Association National Championship Tournament. And whereas, Coach Robertson's best season came in nineteen ninety-one, when the Sun Chiefs won thirty-two games, claimed the state title, and finished sixth in the nation. And whereas, Coach Robertson ranks among the all-time coaching wins in the state of Alabama. He is second among active coaches and seventh among all-time coaches in the NJCCA, and has been inducted into the Ballin County High School Hall of Fame, the NJCCA Region Twenty-Two Hall of Fame, and the NJCCA Basketball Coaches Hall of Fame. And whereas, Coach Robertson and his wife of forty-four years, Patsy, are the parents of three children and six grandchildren. They plan to continue to attend Sun Chief games during his retirement and enjoy time with his family. And whereas, through the years, Jack Robertson has earned immense respect from his tireless dedication, exceptional abilities, and his coaching legacy. He is truly deserving of special recognition on the occasion of his retirement. And now, therefore, being resolved, that the Alabama Community College System Board of Trustees hereby recognizes and honors Jack Robertson for his years of service, and this resolution is offered to him in deepest admiration and appreciation, along with sincere best wishes for the future.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion by Officer Sted.
Any discussion there being none, all those in favor of approving the resolution for commending Jack Robertson and his wonderful career, please raise your hand, or indicate by voice.
Aye for Milton.
It's Janice Lee, and I'm present. Did not see, observed, or thought of. I didn't think he was going to be here. He wore white shirts.
There was a contingent from Faulkner trying to get in the building down in the lobby.
We'll check with security to see whether we'll come back with a better PR.
Very good.
The next item, I'm determined to tell on myself just a little bit, but I also would like to frame this update with really with all of its significance, because a couple weeks ago, when our community colleges hosted a global summit on meeting the millennial workforce. A couple of years ago, this is, I'm sorry, it's going to mess up, a couple of years ago, I was involved in a issue where we're looking at publications to reach the current students that we're looking at, at community colleges. And one of my comments was, is this a big scoop to me? And the person turned to me and said, well, how old are you? And I said, okay, good point. And I think the whole point is that we are dealing with a changing, a different population. We need to make sure that we understand that, that particular factor, the characteristics and components, and kind of we're in the midst of a workforce crisis of such. And part of addressing that workforce crisis is understanding the millennial generation. And so, Dr. Perry Moore and his team hosted the TA3 Symposium on his campus some weeks ago, literally brought educators in from around the world to present. I was there, it was an outstanding conference. And again, this is one of these things that often gets lost among all of the other stuff that's swirling around the community college system. And I'm just telling you, this is significant, this is a big deal, nobody else is doing these kinds of things. So I asked Dr. Moore if maybe his team would be willing to update the board at conference and provide you with some feedback, and he very graciously said that he would be able to do that. He's not here today because, had he been here today, his wife would have come out and come to me because they had a cruise planned. So he is cruising in Alaska, and I'm glad that he's getting so much needed time away. But I know that Bruce, are you going to be presenting?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Crawford. We appreciate you and your team being here today, and we're excited to hear about the Symposium.
Good morning, everybody.
...community and technical colleges, particularly among the industrialized nations. The mission of TA3, which we have, Lawson State is one of the community colleges. I, I know that Dr. Riddell for LBW joined this past year and there may be others that are in here that are part of TA3. But to support learning, innovation, and exchange among institutions offering pre-backed board technical education programs. To promote policies and research that support the ability to be effective leaders in regional economic development and to disseminate lessons learned. And so this was part of that TA3 conference for international people. The theme that we talked about, uh, reaching the millennial workforce, new ways of learning, earning, and interacting. And they added another item to it after they got started innovating is another item that you'll see. Uh, the four areas that they focus on, and they had panel groups for each one of those areas to discuss that. And they had a leader, a keynote speaker, and then grabs each panelist to talk about it. Then we had a set of millennials who would also talk about the particular issues that they were presenting in the document. Now Regina and, uh, Vernon had a big hand in getting this organized, pulling it together. So they want to share with you, Dr. Ward, want to make sure we share with you the process of getting us to this point. And then we will come back and share what the key points were, were, uh, after the conference ended.
Thank you. Dr. Ward came back from Belfast and, and said, I have an opportunity for us. And, uh, he contacted Vernon and I, we got together in November and, um, then he gave us this huge amount of work. And so we thank him for that every day. So we started work in November, um, making all the plans. We would have Friday morning conference calls with this group of international people. Um, we started sending out, we sent out RFPs for hotels. Um, we considered everything that we were looking at doing, um, to give the hotels, uh, to select the hotels for us. We knew that we wanted to tour down, uh, the downtown Birmingham district. Um, we wanted the international travelers to be able to see some of our history. Uh, our registration, um, the TA3 and CSDA Corporation for Skilled Workforce, uh, worked to bring the, the registration, uh, online and then they would provide us with the registration, uh, names. And so we would have to check those with the hotels to make sure that all of our travelers, um, were accommodated. Um, we wanted to keep everyone in one location so that we could transport them also. Um, for the transportation, that was, um, that was a, a big deal. Um, we wanted to make sure everyone could get to where they were going. We didn't want people to be lost in Birmingham. So we had backup drivers and, uh, uh, gave them information for taxis. And we also utilized Uber and, um, it's amazing how they were, they used Uber. We were just fine Uber drivers everywhere on campus. So that, that was, um, um, I, I liked the idea that, that they already knew what they were doing. Uh, we had to give them information on time and I had trouble with military time. I did not know what that was. So I quickly learned that I didn't know. So did, in Germany is twelve o'clock still twelve o'clock? I have no idea. So, so that was hard. Um, but, uh, the information I gave them was, was correct eventually. And then we worked on our conference program book. Um, uh, Dr. Keisha James did a wonderful job on this. It was, uh, it was a really hard task. We had a revolving agenda, um, so it was a, a hard task to get everything in this one booklet with our presenters and their bios, our photos, uh, do you want a red shirt, do you want a black shirt? So, um, and that was hard, hard to put together. And then we communicated through a, a shared Dropbox. That's how we worked instead of having to have meetings all the time. We would communicate everything through Dropbox and emails and a few phone calls. But we did, most of our work, uh, was through Dropbox. Um, I guess Williams can tell you about this information.
First, I'd just say thank you to Chancellor Heinrich and the board for having us this morning. Renovation of our shell space. Over the last couple of years, programs, events, and activities have increased on the campus of Lawson State. Uh, we knew that was an issue, so Dr. Ward saw that need and he addressed it. We had this space, maybe fifty-nine hundred square feet. That was just, as I said earlier, a shell space. Uh, renovations started, um, late, I think, fall of two thousand fifteen, early March two thousand sixteen. We saw a total renovation. Uh, we can do one large room that can accommodate up to two hundred and fifty people or we can do six small rooms or any combination in between. The area is, um, has collapsible, divisible, divisible walls where you can, you know, make the difference with that. Uh, in the future, we're looking to have that same VR, including, uh, technology. We don't have the funds for that right now, but we're, we're looking forward to that. And that's, um, a quick shot of the Symposium on Monday, which was the second day of our session. And I'll just kind of walk through the four-day, um, Symposium. On Sunday, we got off to a great start and brought historical perspectives and knowledge to realization. Visitors from around the globe visited and toured the historical Kelly Ingram Park. They began to experience a history that we never hoped to relive. They saw statues of Ground Zero where leaders and citizens were met with violence. The foot soldier statue depicting dogs loose on civil rights leaders. The Sixteenth Street Baptist Church where four little girls were killed and many more injured as a result of bombs that ripped through the historic church, just highlighting a few. Several participants knew of our ugly past. Seeing the statues gave them a different, different perspective that touched the hearts of many. This gives a snapshot of how the evening started and progressed into a day of celebration. Mrs. Andrea Taylor, President and CEO of the Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, spoke vividly about the history of the institute, their future goals, and the importance of knowing history so that it's not repeated. As the two thousand sixteen TA3 Symposium kicked off, Monday was the meat of the four-day period as they began to address the theme, as Dr. Crawford mentioned earlier, reaching the millennial workforce, new ways of learning, earning, and interacting in the digital age. We were very fortunate to have an outstanding lineup of presenters such as Mrs. Patricia Buckley, Economist and Managing Director for Economic Policy and Analysis for Deloitte. Mr. Christopher Kent, the Foresight Alliance. Mrs. Kathleen Carr, Certified Life and Career Coach. Mr. Sasha Fisher, Learning Officer for Siemens. And Mr. Jason Rudd, Education Manager also with Siemens. And Mr. Samir Gaddari, Senior Program Officer for the Choice Foundation. All right, Tuesday led us in a different direction. The group boarded a bus and traveled to Vance, Alabama to tour the Mercedes-Benz International Facility. After touring, the group traveled to our Bestmeh campus to, and was met by the Mayor of Bestmeh, Kenneth Gully. And after a warm welcome from the mayor, the group toured our Alabama Center for Automotive Excellence and the Mechatronics Center. As the day began to come to a close, we transitioned to a different setting. The group toured Innovation Depot, an epic center for technology, startups, and entrepreneurs, commonly known as an incubator. Commonly known as an incubator. Devin Laney, President and CEO, met and welcomed the group and toured the facility. Innovation Depot is a melting pot of businesses including information technology, financial, engineering, and business services. After a tour of the facility, Devin Laney talked about the new ways of innovating and gave three entrepreneurs an opportunity to talk about their business experiences and what Innovation Depot has done to foster and grow their business. Winding down from the evening, a rooftop reception was held with another exotic selection of foods provided by Chef Clayton Food System. This reception provided another opportunity to network, share ideas, and foster and develop relationships. As the conference come, came to a close, members of the TA3 organizations held their annual business meeting. Members were given the opportunity to present their ideas, service, and products of their respective businesses. In addition, members were allowed the opportunity to talk about their experiences at the Symposium, what worked, how it could be improved, what could be applied to their respective business or college, and so on. Several members, including the U.S. Secretariat and the European Secretariat stated, and I quote, "This was the best planned and organized conference in the organization's thirty-year history. This commercial we could not have fought." And it goes a long way to speak volumes about the leadership of our President, Dr. Perry W. Ward, and the team he solicited to orchestrate the two thousand sixteen Symposium. At the close of this Symposium, the group feasted again on our southern cuisine, which included collard greens, mac and cheese, black eyed peas, canned yams, fried chicken, pork tendons, and peach cobbler, all provided by our students, our culinary arts students. And I have a couple of other things I'd like to talk about, our signage. We developed a Lawson State backdrop, you may have seen earlier, uh, that was developed as a branding component to highlight Lawson State locally, regionally, and internationally. And in addition to that backdrop, we developed roll-up signs that highlighted all of our sponsors. And as you know, our own Chancellor Heinrich stepped up to the plate and served as our premier sponsor. Thank you again. And in addition to branding, the sign welcomed our guests as they entered every facet of the TA3 Symposium. Sheraton Hotel, Birmingham Civil Rights Institute, Innovation Depot, and both Birmingham investment campuses. And as I closed, we saw a committed team of staff members on campus. Our maintenance and ground staff went above and beyond the call of duty. And I felt that we should do something special for them because they always seem to be the group that gets left out. And I went to Dr. Ward and he thought that's an excellent idea. So we had an appreciation luncheon for those individuals because on Sunday, I went out to the campus on Sunday, the ground staff were out and it was probably ninety-five degrees, they were out playing for hours. So we really wanted to say thank you for all of their efforts and for everyone that participated. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams, Ms. Jordan. This, the Vincy College of the Netherlands will be the host for the two thousand seventeen conference. And those of you who are not members and may be interested in becoming a member, I suggest that you go to TA3 website and find out how to become a member of the association. Just the key points that they gathered from the panel that discussed new ways of learning. They talked about the economic conditions, how they influence the millennials. And then they talked about the fact that they all need reverse, robust career guidance is necessary for us all and to continue to work with them because they're constantly changing, so the career is going to change. Uh, teach students how to learn and how to self-actualize. And then the fact that we'll, will robots replace us or will they support us in our job roles? So they talked about those things. New ways of earning, uh, continuous and blended learning would be necessary. Uh, maybe levels of specialized skills will increase. Uh, that means our job decrease, then the role will be more specialized. And so the need for specialized skills is necessary. Hard and soft skills, we talk about that a lot within our system or within our workforce. We talk about the students getting the technical skills and all the hard skills that they need, but we still lacking in the soft skills, so we mentioned some of those there. Public and private partnerships will be the key to the success that, that you'll have in the workforce. And the last, I'm a mathematician, so I made a formula for the last one. Great companies equal the people who have the skills and competencies necessary, uh, to provide the services that you're trying to do. Other than the new ways of interacting, it's to teach skills and demand, uh, in-demand, to contextualize learning and internships and apprenticeships. And you've heard a lot about that through our CTE programs, uh, our apprenticeship programs, and getting students onto the internships and externships, those kinds of things that they need. Translation of skills is, is as important as having them. Being able to move those skills from one job to the next job or from one task to the next task is very important. A shift from lifetime employment to lifetime employability because we have people who live much longer, they're working longer, and so being able to be employable at, at, at senior age is very good. Uh, new ways of innovating, tools of innovation include boot camps. Keep it local, that means you pledge to do local business first within your communities. Create new learning environments and, uh, are challenge-based. Uh, flexible staff who can change through continuous professional development. So you see professional development is very important for our staff. We have to make sure that we continue to do that because the job market is changing, so therefore they have to be ready and prepared for what's current. Preparing technologies requires, uh, mentoring on learning technologies and team teaching. And this was the overall key insights that were written on the TA3 website. All young people, regardless of ethnicity, ethnicity, how can you even see it? Social, economic circumstances, uh, education, or geographic, uh, location. Everybody wants mentors. That means that you need to have somebody who can be a mentor to someone else and train skills if necessary. Millennials want to have control over their path in life and education. Millennials want to be connected to the mission of the company digitally, socially, and within their communities. So that's why you have a lot of stuff on social media these days. You have different ways of connecting to your companies. So those are the things that will, that actually fell out from this conference, uh, from all the members. Here are where the people are from across the international areas. Denmark, Ireland, Germany, Basque Country, we haven't looked that up, know where it was. Uh, northern, I put it on the side, remember, northern Spain. Uh, we have a lot of people from the United States, across the United States, who are here from community colleges, other corporations and businesses, and corporations that were here to support us. We have a number of institutions within the system who were here at the conference with us as well. We thank you all for supporting, uh, that initiative with Dr. Ward. And this is the group on the top of the rooftop, I believe, uh, Birmingham in the background. Special thanks, Dr. Heinrich, and to the system for your support of the TA3 Conference and Dr. Ward and this initiative. We appreciate that and he does pretty much thank you. This is on where you can go and find more information. If you Google, uh, TA3 Transatlantic, then this will come up and you can go in there and find more information, more slides, about a thousand pictures out there of the events that have transpired during that time. So you can see all of the things they have. This is our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Crawford. Yeah, I have one, uh, one, one final item. We're excited that we continue to build our team here at the system office and it's my pleasure to introduce our most, uh, resident member, Dr. Cynthia Beenan. Uh, Dr. Beenan joined us and she is Director of Student Affairs. We're still ahead to have her on board. Welcome.
Just checking, did anyone come in from a, a, a Falkland that we did not recognize earlier? We checked, we have to. Just want to make sure we don't overlook anybody. Uh, I can give a presentation for Coach Rock, which the world is proud to do. Uh, I'd like to welcome Representative John Nye. We sure appreciate your, your attendance here and your interest in our, in support for our work. Are there any other members of the Alabama Legislature from the present that I overlooked? Senator Ross, I'm sorry. Usually you're on another run if you need. Senator Ross, thank you so much for your presence and thanks for your encouragement and your support too.
We adopted a little more condensed schedule today. Uh, very shortly after adjourning this meeting, we'll, uh, start our work session shortly thereafter and have it before lunch. And, uh, also Chancellor, we scheduled our next regular board meeting August tenth at, uh, Calhoun State Community College. Looking forward to going to Morgan County. Great, great part of this great state. Anything else from, any other, any comments from any of the trustees? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motions are second. All in favor, say aye. Stand adjourn.